Big 7 o'clock. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board Appeals of the Town of Orleans. There are three cases to be heard tonight, and other businesses as well. Those cases are numbers 19 -- I want to just see if everyone is here. We intend to take the cases in numerical order on -- we just have an idea where everyone will stand. Number 1945, the application of Christopher Gale Scudelary. Case number 1946, the application of Daniel G. Schmieg and Andrea L. Schmieg. And case number 1947 is the application of Arthur K. Augustine, Sr., very well. Then we will proceed. This is a public hearing in the case of number 1945. The application of Christopher Gale Scudelary for special permit is set forth in General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, under zoning by law, Section 164-21A, Note 5, to construct a master bedroom and a lawn addition to the laundry and an entry room resulting in greater than 4,000 square feet of building coverage. This property is located at 23 Toey Lane, Orleans map 92, parcel number 50. Attending on behalf of the board, other regular members, Marnik, Matthew Cole, Beth McCartney, Ralph Sodestrom, and Greg DeLaurie, and the Board Secretary Sandy Stewart. Also in attendance is the Building Inspector of the Town of Orleans, Brian Harrison. Are any members of the board disqualified by reason of a conflict of interest prohibited by law? Have any members of the board communicated with the applicant or any interested parties concerning the application? No positive response. Voting on the application therefore will be the regular members in attendance. Do all those who tend to testify in this hearing aver and affirm that the testimony will be the truth, the whole thing is enough to prove? Very well. Then we'll hear from the applicant.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Ferris. I'm from CBT Architects, and I'm representing Gale and Christopher Scudelary for this proposed addition. John O'Reilly, the surveyor, may also be here this evening. He's attending another meeting, but it's based on the requirements he was going to attend. I did bring the boards, which I could show, although they're the same as what you perceived. And it's really pretty straightforward in that the home that the Scudelarys live in, they've been there for just about three years. It's a beautiful house, and is a house that has a beautiful center living area, and then wing to the east, and also a wing to the west. And the idea for the addition is that the additions would take place in two locations. To the east-hand side, off of the master bedroom, it would be to provide a study and also enlarge the master bathroom. And to the west, it would be to provide a laundry area and also extend the covered entrances. So also at the upper level, the upper level would be, without increasing any floor area, provide a dormer scenario for one of the upper rooms. So in terms of the way that it's happening for elevations, this is the north or front or street elevation. And again, this is the center portion of the house. This part is existing right here. This is the master bedroom. These elements here actually create shutters that actually do close over the arched openings. This is a sliding shutter panel. And what we're doing in terms of adding the study and master bath is to do a lean-to. So the house is really, I think, financially composed. It's pretty informally composed, with the center gable element that's parallel through the street, these two perpendicular cables. And then on this side, there's a lean-to element already as a dormer. So for our dormer upstairs, we're, in a sense, mentoring that and creating a dormer that uses its top line off of the same high ridge, and then a lean-to element to create the study and master bath. So this is the side elevation of that component. So the idea is that for any new roof shingles, the roof shingles are going to match and blend with the existing. For any siding, the siding is also going to be wood shingles to match and align and blend with the existing. On the west side of the house, which is the driveway side, the -- right now, the side entrance, which is very frequently used, happens to be the space for the washer dryer as well. So what Gale and Chris would like to do is to have that be a separate space so that as guests enter and exit the house, that they are not necessarily walking past the washer dryer. So we're creating a separate space for that, elongating a little bit the entrance hall there and creating a little bit of an expanded covered entrance there. Again, on that particular side, that's an element that you would see as you drive down the driveway. It's also a lean-to element that basically works with the existing roof lines of the house. The dormer on this side is actually existing. When you get to the side of the house, the idea is that this -- can you see that? This high point of the roof is actually working off of the existing roof line again, and it's a lean-to element, which would have the laundry component here, a covered entrance there, and also the existing garage is just beyond. So the coverage is exceeding the 10%, which is allowable. I think the current coverage on the survey is identified as 9.4. And with the two additions, the study and master bath addition is 335 square feet, and then the laundry addition, including the covered area, is 136 square feet. So that brings it up to a coverage of 10.6%, which is why we're here tonight. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if --
Actually, what you're doing, from the way you describe it, is that you're increasing the symmetry on the east-west plane.
It is taking certainly some cues from the existing house. I think that something terrific about architecture on the Cape is that it has a nice informality to it. You often have this additive feel to many homes that things happen kind of as years pass, and so that's happened.
Any questions for the board members?
What's the difference between the revised plan and the original plan that we got?
So a few updates that we provided, based on our request, that we provide more elevation dimension or elevation dimensions than what was on the original plan.
Okay.
So you'll see that I've added notes to these plans to identify what, for example, the plate height is of the construction here. And in some cases, it would be a little bit harder to put an actual dimension on there because it's got high points, as I mentioned, off of existing components of the house versus specifically 10 feet. We also added sheet numbers and then just enlarged the --
Thank you.
Sir, could you identify yourself?
I'm Oona Butter.
Do you wish to speak?
I have a question. Sorry.
We'll see what the question is. I'm trying to see where this fits in procedurally. What's your question, sir?
The question is, how far east does the new addition extend from the previous building?
Turn this a little bit towards you so you can see that as well. The -- on the east side, it's extending 13 feet out. It's a setback from the front elevation, about two and a half feet, and then it extends beyond there. Based on the survey, so the survey information does have the addition part on there. Currently, there's a property line in this direction, basically. The current setback line from this corner is 39.8 feet, so a 25-foot setback is what's required. From this corner, it's now projected a little bit farther out at 72.5. On this side, I'm sorry I didn't mention the dimensions earlier, but on the laundry side, it's basically a 10-foot projection from this element of the house and a 5-foot projection from the garage element.
Did you want to see the sideline setbacks, where it is on the lot?
I understand.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for the board?
I had a question of the person that just come, Oona Butter. Where is your property?
My property is, first, I have a right-of-way over the property to the east.
Is that your white shell driveway there?
Yes. And then so I'm up behind -- I'm sort of catatonic. I'm 27, Toey Lane.
Looks like you're not on the applicant's property. You're on somebody else's property with that driveway?
Unless it's the lot -- maybe it is the lot to the east end. I thought it was originally the sort of lot, but...
And then you go down your driveway to your house, which you can't see your house from Toey Lane, right? Can you see the applicant's house from your property, from your house, I mean?
No.
Okay. That's all I had.
Very well. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
I will. I'm comfortable with it.
Did you have a chance to visit Town Hall and take a look at the application and the plans before?
No.
We're offered -- Ms. McCartney has offered to show you what we have. You had the right to do that.
I'm right here, about to look at it.
But having your question answered, you say now that you, at least now, you are in favor of the application, sir?
It's the trigger that's right there here, yeah.
No.
Very well.
I also, I brought a copy of the survey. If you might be to just talk about that.
No, I don't think so. I understand it. Well, maybe other members of the board will need clarification, but I don't. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Therefore, being, unless there's any further comment, then I'm going to close this hearing for discussion by the board. Mr. DeLaurie, do you have any thoughts, or did you wish to?
I'm in favor of the application.
Very well. Mr. Cole?
Likewise.
Ms. McCartney?
This has always been one of my favorite houses, so I'm happy to say that you've incorporated into what's there and kept it sort of keepy in favor.
I'm in favor.
Very well. Then, following public deliberation by the Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, a quorum of qualified members being present and voting, and based on the application of Gale Scudelary filed June 15, 2012, based also upon the site plan prepared by J.M. O'Reilly and Associates, Inc., dated June 12, 2012, and the plans entitled "Existing Plans and Elevations and Proposed Plans and Elevations Prepared by CBT Architects," dated June 14, 2012, "Supplementing and Supplementary Plans," dated July 12, 2012. I move that the board adopt the following findings of fact. The subject, one, the subject property known as 23 Toey Lane is shown as parcel 50 on Orleans map 92 and is in an R district. Two, the present use of the property is a single-family residence. Three, the proposed use of the property is a single-family residence with the addition of an expanded master bedroom and a laundry and entry. Four, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the established and future character of the neighborhood and will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the zoning by law. Five, the alteration and reconstruction, alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. The area of the existing structure is 3,964 square feet, including a shed. The area of the proposed addition will be 4,435 square feet. Six, the site is adequate in terms of size and suitable for the proposed use. The site consists of 42,025 square feet, of which the existing building lot coverage is 9.4%. After the proposed addition, the coverage will be 10.6%. Seven, the proposed use will have no negative impact on traffic flow or safety. Toey Lane is a private way, and there will be no increased traffic caused by the addition on Toey Lane or any budding right-of-way. The proposed use will have no negative impact on the visual character of the neighborhood. The proposed use is isolated from and will have no impact on the method of sewage disposal source of water drainage or water resources, which will be unchanged from the existing use. Ten, utilities and public services will be adequate for the proposed use or change in use. Eleven, noise and litter will not be increased after the construction of the proposed use. Twelve, there will be no adverse impact on groundwater quality and recharge volume and the water quality of coastal and fresh surface water bodies. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in -- all those, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Based on the findings of fact, I move that the board grant a special permit pursuant to Sections 164-21A, Note 5, and 164-44 of the zoning by law to run with the land for the construction of an addition in conformity with the application. The site plan prepared by J.M. O'Reilly and Associates, Inc., dated June 12, 2012, and the plans entitled "Existing Plans and Elevations and Proposed Plans and Elevations Prepared by CBT Architects," dated June 14, 2012, and supplementary plans dated July 12, 2012. Do I hear a second? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you want your extra plans back?
Um, I'm out of your hands.
Saves you some of the printing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Members of the board, we will now consider and conduct a public hearing in the case number 1946. The application of Daniel G. and Andrea L. Schmieg for a special permit is set forth in General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, under zoning by law, Section 164-21, Note 21A, Note 5, to construct a shed resulting in the building coverage in excess of 4,000 square feet. The property is located at 13 Kingsbury Lane, Orleans map 71, parcel 1. Attending on behalf of the board, the regular members, Marnik, McCartney, Sodestrom, Cole, and DeLaurie, and the Board Secretary Sandy Stewart. Also in attendance is the Building Inspector of the Town of Orleans, Brian Harrison. Are any members of the board disqualified by reason of a conflict of interest prohibited by law? Have any members of the board communicated with the applicant or any interested parties? No positive response. All those who are intending to testify in this hearing, please aver or affirm that the testimony they're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very well. Then, Mr. Little, for the applicant, tell us why we should grant this application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman David Little, representing Dan and Andrea Schmieg. This is the third time that I've been before the Zoning Board of Appeals for them. They live at the very end of Kingsbury Lane on a property known as Namacoit Point, and we're here to, simply because we're exceeding the 4,000-square-foot threshold to construct a shed. The coverage will go from 4,320 square feet to 4,440 square feet, and the trigger in the Orleans zoning by law requires a special permit to exceed that threshold. I have a photos of the shed I'll pass out. Photos of the proposed shed I will pass out.
Are they living in the house now?
No. The shed's located approximately 31 feet from the neighbors' property line. It's, I don't believe it will be visible from the neighbors' house. It's located approximately 136 feet from the neighbors' house. The Schmiegs and the neighbors, the Estradys, I believe, get along pretty well. They have children in common schools and have become well-acquainted since they moved, since the Schmiegs have moved to the area, or I should say, they moved and then they've been absentee owners during construction, but they intend to be moving back soon. Relative to the special permit criteria, the 4.1-acre site, 3.3 acres of buildable upland is adequate in terms of size for the shed addition. The resulting building coverage is only 3.1% of the buildable upland. The site is certainly suitable for the addition of a shed. The purpose is actually to be used as a garden shed. The applicant's proposed to have a garden near the shed, and it's going to be specifically used for that purpose. There would be no new impact on traffic flow or safety. There will be no impact on neighborhood visual character. As I said, I don't believe it will even be visible. The property is served by a Title V septic system and a private well. Drainage characteristics will not be impacted by the addition of the shed. The property has the benefit and use of available public services and utilities. There will be no noise and litter. And as to the impact of groundwater quality, recharge volume, and water quality of coastal and freshwater bodies, the shed will not impact any of those valuable resources. So I'm hopeful that you find the proposal in harmony with the intent of the by law and would approve a special permit to exceed the 4,000-square-foot threshold. That would be my presentation. Thank you.
Very well. Any questions by any of the board members?
I had a question, but it's not really related to the shed. Can I ask it anyway?
If you have something.
Town water doesn't come out there that far?
It does not. And it's unfortunate because there's a very high iron content in the water that they do have, so they have to filter it.
And I noticed they have two wells, one for irrigation and one for domestic.
Yes. One is, the one that's being used for irrigation is the older well, and the newer well will be used for the domestic.
That's all I had.
Very well. Are there any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? No response. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to this application? No response. Unless there are other remarks, Mr. Little, then we're going to close the hearing with the sense of the board.
I have no further remarks.
I'm fine. I am too.
Okay.
Very well. Then, in that case, members of the board, following public deliberation by the Zoning Board of Appeals, a quorum of qualified members being present and voting, and based on the application, Daniel G. Schmieg and Andrea L. Schmieg dated June 25, 2012, and based also on the plot plan prepared by David A. Little, the writer at Wilcox, Inc., dated June 25, 2012, I move that the board adopt the following findings of fact. One, the subject property known as 13 Kingsbury Lane is shown as parcel 1 on Orleans map 71 and is in an R district. The present use of the property is a single-family dwelling. Three, the proposed use of the property is a single-family dwelling with a 10-by-12-foot The proposed use will not be detrimental to the established and future character of the neighborhood and will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the zoning by law. Five, the alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure which has been built or is being built under a special permit. Six, the site is adequate in terms of size and suitable for the proposed shed. The site consists of 4.1 acres, of which 3.3 acres is buildable upland. The shed will add 120 square feet of building coverage, resulting in a total of 4,440 square feet. The proposed shed will have no negative impact on traffic flow or safety. Eight, the proposed shed will have no negative impact on the visual character of the neighborhood. Nine, the proposed shed is isolated from and will have no impact on the method of sewage disposal source of water drainage or water resources. The shed is to be used for storage and garden purposes and will not affect the drainage characteristics of the entire lot. Eleven, noise and litter will not be increased after the construction of the shed. Twelve, there will be no adverse impact on groundwater quality and recharge volume and the water quality of coastal and fresh surface water bodies. Any discuss -- do I hear a second of the motion for the findings of fact?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Therefore, based on the findings of fact, I move that the board grant a special permit pursuant to Sections 164-21A, Note 5, and 164-44 of the zoning by law to run with the land for the construction of a shed in conformity with the application of Daniel G. Schmieg and Andrea L. Schmieg dated June 25, 2012, and the plot plan prepared by David A. Little, writer at Wilcox, Inc., dated June 25, 2012. Do I hear a second on the motion to grant the special permit?
Second.
Ms. McCartney, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
the case 1947, which is the application of Art K. Augustinson, Jr., for a special permit to set forth in general laws, chapter 40A, section six, under Orleans zoning by law sections 164-3C1, 164-21A, and 164-43 to construct additions on two pre-existing nonconforming dwellings. This property is located at 59 Gibson Road, Orleans map 11 parcel 68. Attending on behalf of the board of the regular members, Mark McCall, and Lori, and the board secretary, Sandy Stewart. Also in attendance is the building inspector of the town of Orleans, Brian Harrison. Are any members of the board disqualified by reason of a conflict of interest, prohibited by law? Have any members of the board communicated with the applicant or any entities parties? No positive response to either of those questions. Therefore, voting on the application of the regular members in attendance. All those intending to testify in this case and hearing do aver that the testimony they're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very well. Then, Mr. Little, good evening, and can you explain to me, and the board, what you're requesting the board to do on behalf of Mr. Augustinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Art Augustinson is proposing two small additions to what he calls his main house and his cottage. For the purposes of this presentation, the dwelling that's closer to Gibson Road, I'm going to refer to as the main house, and the one in the rear, I'm going to refer to as the cottage. The main dwelling, we, my, the applicant is proposing to remove a bedroom and put a small addition on, which will allow an expanded living area and will also allow for a somewhat larger bedroom with a closet. Presently, there are two bedrooms and small closets for each. The proposal is to remove this bedroom entirely, to have an expanded living area, and the addition would provide that expansion and a new closet there. The addition itself is in keeping with the architectural design of the house. It matches the pitch of the roof. It extends approximately four feet out off the rear of the house. The cottage in the rear, the proposal is to expand what is now a very small bedroom. There is, as you can see, there's an open living area with two bedrooms. One is very small, and the proposal is to expand that, and that is accomplished via a shed dormer extending out toward the rear property line. Both dwellings are relatively small. The, with respect to the setbacks, the existing dwelling is located 9.4 feet from the side property line, and the proposed addition will be located 11.1 feet. So the addition does not increase the nonconforming nature of the dwelling. And with respect to the cottage in the rear, the closest corner of the cottage to the rear property line is 11.3. The closest corner of the proposed addition will be 11.6. So again, we are not increasing the nonconforming nature of the two structures with respect to their setbacks. The property, while it is small, the coverage is being increased by 0.6%. It's going from 7.1% to 7.7%. There presently is 1,591 square feet of coverage, and we're going to 1,721 square feet of coverage. The dwellings are pre-existing nonconforming. According to the assessor's records, they were both constructed approximately in 1950. I have, I made a copy of the town GIS map, which I would like to hand out to show you where the existing, our property is located in the middle with the dark green lawn of this town map that's on the GIS website. As you can see where the additions are going, the neighboring houses are quite far away from these property lines. I'm hopeful that, and I don't anticipate that there will be any issues with visual characteristics, and I'm using that as a demonstration to confirm that. With respect to the special permit criteria, the site is adequate in terms of size for the two additions. The increase in building coverage of 130 square feet results in a total building coverage of 7.7%, which conforms with our town regulations. The site is suitable for the continued residential use. There will be no increase in traffic flow and no impact on traffic safety in the area. I believe the two small additions will have no impact on neighborhood visual character. Both dwellings are served by a Title V septic system, and the additions constitute no additional flow to the system. The drainage characteristics on the site will not be changed by the new additions. And in fact, the total flow or the design flow will actually be reduced by 110 gallons per day due to the removal of the one bedroom. The property has the benefit and use of all available utilities and public services. There will be no noise, other than the temporary noise during, noise impact during construction. All construction debris would be contained in a dumpster on the site, and the project will have no new impact on groundwater quality, recharge volume, and water quality of coastal and freshwater bodies. That would be my presentation. I'm be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Are there any questions by any of the board members, Mr. Soderstrom?
Do you have a question? Mr. McCall?
What is the setback? If this were being built today, is the setback 20 feet?
25.
25 feet?
Yes.
Is there any reason why these couldn't have been moved so that they didn't still impose on the nonconforming?
Well, the layout of the main house is such that he wanted to expand his living room, and the only way to do that was to go in that direction, and he wanted to create a closet for the one remaining bedroom in that dwelling.
There's no way he could go off to the right to accomplish this?
That wouldn't, no. The design and the layout of the house is such that it didn't, it didn't work with what he wanted to accomplish in the house itself. And with respect to the cottage, he wanted to enlarge this, so we thought going out in this direction seemed to be the best. It's a very narrow bedroom. Extending it this way didn't help as far as having a suitable living space for the bedroom itself. So those are the reasons that we extended the two additions in those directions.
Well, I guess this seems like the simplest way from his standpoint, but if you put that addition on the front rather than the back, you wouldn't be continuing the nonconformity.
I'm, I'm not.
But you'd have to move the wall or two.
No, but the zoning by law allows an applicant to come before this board, provided you don't increase a nonconformity to seek relief. And the applicant, working with Bernadette MacLeod in our office, chose this. So we're before you to seek relief for the additions that he wants. If that, this is his first choice, so that's why we're here, and the by law allows us to do that. We obviously explored all alternatives, but this was what my client preferred.
I see Beth's point. It could have been done, the 40 square feet could have been added to the front. They could have taken the walls that separated the two bedrooms and shifted that around and made the same amount of space. But for 40 square feet, I don't have a problem with it after visiting the site and seeing that it was pretty much shielded from any of the neighbors looking right at it or affecting the sense of looming structures.
I'm Nea Butter, who he's very close to at 61 Gibson Road, and he is, that is very close to my property.
I was talking about the cottage.
Oh, okay. I was talking about the main house.
Right.
Which property are you on?
I'm at 61 Gibson Road, so I'm north of him.
On this, this site.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Cole, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No. Again, I think this is one of the more complex issues to get around. You start with two structures, each with one nonconformity, and though the building is having within the setback, you're not increasing the nonconformity. So again, I think the by law clearly allows what is trying to be done here. So I don't, again, I don't have any questions based on what's been laid out.
Very well. Let me see if I understand this correctly. So the, in this area here, Mr. Little, which is now going to be setback 11.1 feet, is there a shower there now?
Yes, sir. There is a shower on the gable end of the house, right here. We are proposing to extend out in this direction and relocate the shower, as shown on this plan.
All right. So you're just, you're bumping it out whatever the size of that additional, you know, living area?
That's correct.
Five feet.
Fine. So the shower is just being pushed out that five feet. I understand that. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My, my only concern is, quite frankly, that my septic system runs, pipe runs right along there, and it's a Title V with a leaching field on that side that's very close to the house. And I'm always concerned when he does construction that there's, you know, it's, something's going to happen to that. So that's really my main concern.
Mr. Little, give us a copy of the portion of the neighborhood. This is your house right here, then?
Yes.
And the look?
And my site slopes down to his.
Okay.
The portion that is, is closest to his is where the septic system, the pipe runs down, and it is a Title V. It's a five-bedroom.
Your house is?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah. So it's fairly good size. I'm just saying that it, he did put up a wall this fall, a fence along part of it in the back, so I think that I will be sort of shielded from any, the cottage, obviously, I don't have a problem with it's the main house and that corner that it's going to sort of, I'm sure it'll be all right.
The applicant seems, claims that where the, on the main house, we're not talking about the cottage.
Right.
The addition to the main house is really not going to come any closer to your property than the corner of the house already is.
Right.
And that's why he says this is kind of a minor variance or change, and he's looking for a special permit. So maybe, not suggesting that your concern isn't real, you have rights in case the septic system is dislodged, but it would appear that it would be unlikely that that's going to occur.
Right. Okay. As long as he can say that he's going to do the construction and remain on his side of the property line, there's not going to be any kind of, you know, going in on my side, because I am concerned about that being there. And that did happen the last time he did construction.
Well, you know, there is kind of a.
So, I mean, I have a past sort of history, so that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that's understandable.
We're talking about nine to 11 feet here of space to work during construction.
Is he going to come in? Obviously, he'd have to come in on the driveway side of the house to do the construction.
Yes, they would.
Is there going to be a basement under this?
No, and I wanted to point that out, if I could, that these additions are going to be on slabs.
Okay.
So there will be a four-foot excavation for a frost wall, so they won't be digging down very deep as they would for a full foundation. It's not, it wouldn't be an eight-foot hole. So it, I think, it's my opinion that your property shouldn't be affected at all, and I can certainly make sure that the property line is adequately.
Just so that you know, when he put in his fence, he dug two feet on my side of the line before he put in his fence, just this spring. So I have reason to be wary of this going on.
I understand. Okay. I didn't realize that.
He cleared two feet in before he put his fence in, on my side of the property line. So that's why I'm saying to you, I want to guarantee that he's not going to do that again, because I have a pipe running down there.
I understand you completely. I was not aware of that, and I will certainly.
I mean, you could easily come out and see the two feet on my side of the line dug up, and I, you know, he didn't even say anything to me that he was going to do it. So that's my concern right now.
I understand.
It's very valid.
I was not aware of that, and I would certainly encourage him to make sure the property line where there is an offense is adequately marked before anything.
Right. And he'll just, it just stays over there. You know, I don't have a problem with him doing what he wants to do with his house. I'm just trying to protect a little bit.
Very well. You've done the plot plan, and you can advise him exactly where the lines are.
I definitely think.
Do you know who's doing the construction?
I do not.
Okay. Will he most likely be doing it himself?
No, he will not.
Okay.
I don't think he's.
Okay.
Is that staked, David? Is that line?
Property line? It's not, but it will be. I can.
It will be. In his state, but he went on the, deliberately on the other side of the stake.
I saw a stake there, right, maybe this far away from, on your side of the fence.
Right.
But I didn't know if the whole line was, the whole line was staked, so that it would be obvious where your line was.
It is obvious, but he still went, like, what I'm telling you is he could go over that, so.
Get some yellow construction tape and just.
And just string it along.
Stretch it across the stakes.
You know, I guess, whatever, yeah.
I mean, if you wanted to have extra notification, so to speak. That's all I had.
I will certainly bring all of your points to your neighbor, and so that he's fully aware of what he did.
He just tends to ignore the property line. That's all. I mean, you know.
Are there any other remarks in connection with this application? I'll close this. If there aren't, I'll close it. The hearing, any, Mr. Soderstrom, do you have any thoughts you need to share with us?
No. It's, looks like straightforward to me.
Very well. Mr. McCall?
Can we stipulate something to the effect that all the construction will be coming in on the driveway, and that the property line will be respected?
That would be a condition which would be satisfied, well, and. That would be a condition which would be satisfied, uh, well, it wouldn't apply once the construction was completed.
I don't think it's so much of, of an issue of where they access. I think it's when they get there from accessing the applicant's driveway. It's obvious they're gonna come in that way, but what they do after that is the issue.
Yeah. I mean, reasonable conditions can be attached to the granting of a special permit. And that may be an appropriate one, the one you, you suggest, because it disappears once the, the-
Well, it sort of seems like there's a history.
Yeah.
Subject to construction being executed in a fashion that doesn't disturb the neighbor's property.
Exactly, a principle of law, anyway, but, um-
Sometimes people need to have it spelled out.
That's fine. Mr. Cole, do you have a thought on, on the condition, on a condition?
Well, ju, just as I stated, that again, the, the construction would be executed in a way that didn't disturb the, the neighbor's property. Because then again, it just sort of raises the bar that jeopardizes a special permit if the neighbor's property is disturbed during the execution. I don't know, Brian, if you have any other experience with this and more, how, how you prefer?
By Dave's idea, marking it, make sure it's marked up the other way, right? Although they are one hundred percent of the time, but we want inspection stuff to try to keep an eye on it.
Yeah. And the problem is Dave drives stakes and then, and then he, he leaves, he doesn't have, you know, authority, you know, he's not responsible for, right? Those that come after you. He can't be responsible for those.
No, but as I've grown older, I've, I can, it doesn't bother me to make sure that you follow, follow, not necessarily boss them, but assure that things get completed properly.
Suppose there were a condition that the construction would be conducted in such a way that there's no trespass on the property of a Butters. Is that much different from what you said?
No, it's good.
It's, it probably is a little bit more specific, like, that's it. That's the line.
I'm comfortable with that.
I think once the construction's over, everyone in, in the neighborhood is going to be satisfied, including the applicant. But in the meanwhile, this is because there's some expressed insecurity and concern, I think that some, a condition such as that may relieve people's anxiety. Very well. Then, if, if unless there's further discussion, following public deliberation by the zoning Board of Appeals, a core of qualified members being present and voting, and based upon the applica, application of Arthur K. Augustensen, Jr., filed June twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve, based also upon the site plan prepared by David A. Little Rider and Wilcox dated June fifth, two thousand twelve, and the construction drawings prepared by Rider and Wilcox for the proposed addition of fifty-nine Gibson Road, main house, and proposed addition on fifty-nine Gibson Road Cottage dated June twelfth, June one, two thousand twelve. I move that the board adopt the following findings of fact. One, the subject property known as fifty-nine Gibson Road is shown as parcel sixty-eight on Orleans map eleven and is in our district. Two, the present use of the property is a single-family dwelling and a cottage constructed in appro, in approximately nineteen fifty. The proposed use of the property is a single-family dwelling and a cottage with additions to both structures. Four, the proposed additions will not be detrimental to the established and future character of the neighborhood and will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. Five, the alter, alteration reconstruction will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, uh, nonconforming structure. Six, the site is adequate in terms of size and suitable for the proposed use. The lot is twenty-two thousand four hundred nine square feet. The total area of the additions is a hundred thirty square feet, resulting in a proposed building coverage of seven point seven percent increased from the present seven point one percent. The size of the lot is consistent with the budding lots and other lots in the neighborhood of the subject on Gibson Road and Hilltop Lane and Hidden Valley Road. Seven, the proposed additions will have no negative impact on traffic flow or safety. Eight, the proposed additions will have no negative impact on the visual character of the neighborhood. The proposed additions are relatively small in size. Nine, the proposed additions are isolated from and have no impact on the method of sewage disposal, source of water, drainage or water resources. Ten, utilities and public services will be adequate for the proposed use. Eleven, noise litter will not be increased after the construction of the proposed additions. Twelve, there will be no adverse impact on the groundwater quality and recharge volume and the water quality of coastal and fresh surface water bodies. A condition, thirteen. A condition during construction is appropriate as follows. Construction shall be conducted in such a way that there is no trespass on the property of a Butters. I'll entertain a second on the motion for findings of fact. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Therefore, based on the findings of fact, I move that the board grant a special permit pursuant to sections one sixty-four dash three C one, one sixty-four dash twenty-one A, one sixty-four dash forty-three, and one sixty-four dash forty-four of the zoning bylaw to run with the land for the construction of additions to the main house and cottage in conformity with the application of Arthur K. Augustensen, Jr., filed June twenty-five, two thousand twelve, the site plan prepared by David A. Little Rider and Wilcox dated June fifth, two thousand twelve, and the drawings prepared by Rider and Wilcox for a proposed, for proposed addition on fifty-nine Gibson Road, main house, and proposed addition on fifty-nine Gibson Road Cottage dated June one, two thousand twelve. This special permit is subject to the following condition. Under the provisions of section one sixty-four dash forty-four D of the zoning bylaw, which conditions have been determined to be necessary to serve the purposes of the zoning bylaw. One, construction shell, of the additions shall be conducted in such a way that there shall be no, there is no trespass on the property of a Butters. Do we hear a second on the motion for granting a special permit?
Second.
Ms. McCarthy, although those, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Sandy Stewart for accepting these two applications at the eleventh hour, which would have, it, it, it kept me from having to come in September versus-
She bribed you with chocolate.
I did.
No, I think it makes, people need to keep going, so that's, I'm glad she did. Yep.
Thank you very much.
You want some of these plans, Rick?
Coming under a certain dollar amount.
I would, please.
Want some more, Dave?
Yep.
How, how old is the practice of recessing for the month of August?
Uh, at least nine years.
You think we should not?
So many clients in the beautiful town of Orleans want to start their project on the Tuesday after Labor Day. It dawned on me the other day, why not take the second half of July and the first half of August off, so you still get a continuous month, but have a meeting in the second half of August that still facilitates a September, early September start, you know? You still get a full month off.
Well, we have January and February off. I don't see why we need to take August off. I mean-
No.
This was an odd winter.
No, but I'm just-
We have very light caseloads.
Yeah, but I mean, to me, twice a month, twelve months a year doesn't bother me at all. I mean, I've been on the other side, we're in waiting to get on meetings and you're, and you're from construction room, the same situation. But I don't, I'm happy to come in August.
I don't know if it's in there, I think it's in one ninety-seven. Chapter one ninety-seven.
Oh, that's the, the town ordinance?
Yeah, the, the board, the board procedures. It's in there.
So to, we wanted to have a meeting in-
Some committees only meet once a month.
Town charter.
So, I think it goes a little differently.
Bye, David.
Enjoy your August off, everybody.
Thank you.
You too, I guess. We're talking about it, anyway.
When I first started practicing law, the Superior Court used to recess in July and August, something which I think was practic, was, now I look back, it was a neanderthal because business, you know, just doesn't come to a halt during the summertime. So speaking for myself, I have no problem with conducting zoning hearings in August if there's a call for it. If we can't do it, that's another thing, but anyway.
Personally, it, it's kind of nice for the board to take a break because then I can take a vacation.
That's, and-
A whole month?
No, but, but, but I have, you know, I'm gonna have to be back mid-August to advertise for the September meeting.
Okay.
So, and, and I'm gonna have to push these decisions through so that they're into the town clerk so that I can go and there's nothing hanging.
We have to also, for, uh-
However you wanna do it, it's fine. You know, if you wanna shift the timeframe or if you wanna, but, but it's been-
I, I think based on the, the nature of the cycle of the construction season in, in the seasonal community we live in, it, it would be nice to shift it so that there's at least one August meeting that again facilitates September starts. You know, so whether that's canceling one meeting instead of two or just shifting that off period forward.
It's also, it's also been the board's policy for so long and the, the meeting schedules posted at the beginning of the year along with deadlines. So the guys that are in before you frequently plan ahead.
Right.
Like David calling me saying, can I squeeze these in? Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
Are you saying, Matt, that a contractor or an applicant that wants to start construction in September would come in and like, an August meeting and then have all the documents together to apply for a building permit and get it approved to start by September?
Right, right.
Seems like, I mean, for a lot of projects, would you really be pushing it?
Yeah, yeah, but you know, then what else, what's the alternative? Rush and get something half-baked, half-baked in July or, or, you know, that, I don't know.
Yeah, but how many construction, you know, projects come before this? We're the zoning Board of Appeals. There's a lot of other, you know, permits being granted.
Right.
You know, that, if, like, we're a fraction, you know, insignificant fraction of the total number of permits being granted, I don't think it's really a-
Yeah, that's true, too.
It's really, makes any difference a chase.
We're not the building department.
Right. How, how much of a seasonal uptick do you see?
What's that?
How much of a seasonal uptick do you see in July and August filings?
No more than the spring.
Yeah.
Pretty steady, it's not, you know, people are here, they don't want things done in their houses and so forth until August, July.
Right, oh, yeah.
Things start in September, so I don't see the real population.
I, I think that the policy of standing down for the month of August came about from the board members wanting to enjoy their summer, too. I, it's just, the way it's always been, I don't know. Harwich doesn't do it, but they only meet once a month anyhow, so.
Of course, they'd have to recalculate our pay rates and everything, it's really-
Yeah, and then figure our vacation time and...
It's up to you, however, however you guys would like to do it.
We're doing this since nineteen ninety-nine, as far as I know, or ninety-eight, by the way it's up.
You didn't leave there long?
Yeah.
I thought we started about the same time.
Huh?
I thought we started about the same time.
I started September ninety-eight.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I know, feels like wow, too.
You've got five years on me.
I have for consideration the approval of the minutes of the meeting of June twentieth, two thousand twelve, which have been circulated.
As amended.
Um, I'm look, I'm looking at-
I know, I didn't circulate the amendments, but Beth caught a typo. And Matt would like, in each of the cases that he recused, he would like it noted in the minutes that he recused.
Very well. Those will be cases nineteen forty-three and nineteen forty-four.
Yeah, I'll sell just-
And neither, and rather than, it, those, those amendments haven't been made yet, then we'll take that up at the next meeting.
It's simple enough, I can make them and-
No, I think that's, I think we should see the final version.
Okay.
Other business, I am, I am able to report that Mr. William McCarthy has been approved by the Board of Selectment as an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, which increases the, our complement by one. It is uncertain between quarter past four and the close of business, whether he was able to be sworn in today.
I don't think so. I called him about six and he said he'd spoken to you.
He did.
Yeah.
He did, but he expects to be able to do that, you know, relatively soon and join us at the next meeting. Welcome also are any other applicants who we, any of members of the board may recommend or those who are citizens of the town of Orleans who express interest to the Board of Selectment. I had circulated last meeting a proposed partial amendment to the rules of, and regulations. I don't know if we should discuss this now or, but it will keep it on the table for the agenda in the future for, to hash it out. I think maybe the best way is for the, any remarks on any of the items be circulated to all the members of the board. So I have had bad experiences in the past drafting and redrafting documents by a committee. And I don't, I don't think I wanna do that. I don't think, I think, I don't think it's efficient for the board to do it, let's put it that way. So I'm suggesting that, subject to any other suggestion that we may have as to how we proceed and go forward.
That, that draft that you came up with was actually done by somebody else in November in two thousand and eleven, right?
Did I do it then? That's, it was, it was pretty-
Did you create that draft?
I think I did. And so I-
I only had two-
I didn't present it formally until Ju, until this last meeting.
Okay, okay. I can't remember-
I think it was in the, I think it was in the queue and the question was whether we were gonna go any further and how much we were going to revamp the rules and regulations of, of this board, which really infringe upon the way the building inspector does his kind of business, or at least that-
Well, I don't know if it infringes as much as it changes the, it just, it just takes this document, zoning Board of Appeals application process, and in my mind clarifies what we need to see if you're going to apply for a special permit or a variance.
Right, that's fine, but you know, the way we've, when I was looking at it a couple of days ago, when I had drafted, it occurred to me that in almost every case, you're, you're needing a lance surveyor or engineer to be involved. And we have to really think long and hard of whether, maybe that's the way business should be done. Is it cumbersome in the case of small projects? Is it cumbersome in the case of small projects where the value of the improvement or construction is relatively small, and, and also the, the conflict with the zoning bylaw is relatively small, and therefore it makes it kind of cumbersome, and discourages people from, from doing work, because it's going to be a whole lot more expensive to do something small than it otherwise would, and they're just gonna let it go. Just, just to, some, just, I'm just talking off the top of my head. That's the type of considerations that we would need to really hash out. And that's what we're looking at right now, right here, Greg, I think, with what I've done. Is, now, there's nothing the matter with bringing in the professionals, because I think the professionals make the project goofproof for the consumer, the, the landowner.
I think it makes it better for recording and records.
Does that, too.
Yeah, I mean, so we have something in black and white that's...
Yeah, well, something, an example, somebody, somebody comes before us for a shed, and the owner, the butter is not here. They're, they don't live here. They're not at the hearing. Shed gets built, the butter comes back and says, what's going on?
Yeah, what did you, what, what did you know about what was going to be built?
Yeah, yeah. How come this is, you know, two feet away from my property? Stuff like that.
Yeah.
I know it's, I know it's, it's an expense.
It's okay, then that, but it's, that's a kind of a threshold question. Maybe that's what we ought to be thinking about.
You also drive some of the stuff underground, too, if you get too restrictive with the tool shed, the lining and so forth. People say, to hell with it, I'm just gonna do it.
I think the example tonight shows a weakness in the zoning code, and, and I think it's a waste of this board's time to hear a case about a hundred and twenty square foot shed. So, you know, one example of that would be a hundred square foot shed, right? I don't need a building permit for that.
It's actually two hundred now, so...
Okay, so for that example, you don't need a building permit, but you need a special permit. And so I think it shows the weakness of, of, of the zoning code in, in that, you know, whether somebody ha, has a twenty acre parcel, or a twenty thousand square foot parcel, as soon as they exceed that four thousand's coverage, whether they want to build a shed, or whether they want to build a whole new house, they're still in front of us. And, and so again, I think that underscores the importance to have something that's somewhat scalable, again, based on project size, so that it doesn't become overly costly to do...
Yeah, I mean, I can see them coming back to build the garage that they took off the first time, you know, so it's like...
You know, if, if some, if somebody's, if we drive people underground and they build something, then if, if they get, if they get called, they have to take it down.
No question about that.
So, that's, that's a pretty big risk. And also, with surveyors, you can get them to, you can get them to set one line. You don't have to have your entire property surveyed.
That's true, too.
You know.
I was more thinking of the site plan.
Not really, not really, Greg, because we're looking for an awful lot of stuff, in each and every, what I mean? Punch list is very, very detailed.
Yeah, yeah.
Will this amendment, you know, require a town meeting approval?
I don't think so.
Well, I, I, I need a clarification at that point. Are, are you looking to incorporate this into chapter one ninety-seven, or are you looking to incorporate it into the cover sheet that goes with every application?
That's where it would be.
Okay. Then, no, this doesn't need, this doesn't need...
No, wouldn't need town meeting approval.
Yeah, okay, so, I was just thinking in terms of timing, you know, it can come anytime.
That's right.
It's not timed to a town meeting.
No, we're not in any hurry, but we, now, we're, some of us have got, starting to have a little bit of longevity on the board, and, and we have a better sense of what's happening, and what problems applicants undergo when they want to do something with their property, and what their butters ought to be, have available to them for information before they even come in to this hearing and say, I'm in favor or opposed to it, you know what I mean?
I, I guess the question is, you know, is this kind of situation, you know, have a need for the five item and less checkout count? You know, and I don't know.
I don't know how to do that, but it's, but I'm think, I think, I think there's a lot to be said for that.
Yeah.
It should be a streamlined procedure. The question is, who's to determine what, where it falls, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, you could, you take a look at, you know, the role of the board, we're sort of the last court of appeals, you know, kind of thing, and, and so, you know, I wouldn't expect, you know, the, too many of the five item or less, you know, to come to us. If, if they're coming, you know, we should probably try to look, you know, in terms of the code, to see if, anyway, you know, we can make them, you know, by right, instead of, you know, having to come to us.
Okay.
We've gone through a period now of, you know, the rather benign, you know, kind of, kind of stuff, and I think it's probably due to the economy, or, or whatever. But, you know, we've had, you know, very few, you know, significant, you know, things come up.
I guess what bothered me tonight was the fact that we have to, he can come in and ask for a special permit to, to do additions on non-conforming, and make it less non-conforming, and it's automatically granted. It's like, why are we in a year? I mean, to me, there were other options that could have been done. If I were to butter and somebody was encroaching on my backyard, I would be upset.
Well, in, in a way, it really isn't automatic at all. This, we have determined by our findings of fact that the changes are not less detrimental to, to the neighborhood, and to two or three other characteristics, you see? So, once that, then, then there's a basis for granting the special permit. So, it isn't automatic. There would, the applicant was candid enough to say, we thought we'd try this first, to see before we went on the other side of the house.
Yeah.
You see, trying to determine what objection there would be to the neighbors, who have a sense of whether this is not more detrimental to the neighborhood at large, and failing to hear an objection on that criteria, or that cri, just that criteria, which you have to find before you get the special permit.
So, if an abutter had come in and...
And saying, yes, this, the neighborhood is ruined because of this.
Okay.
You know, because now, all of a sudden, you've bumped out that shower by five feet.
Yeah.
And that's just not the way other houses do it. We, we know that the, the lot sizes were, that, that's a close knit neighborhood. This is twenty-two, that's twenty-two thousand square feet.
Right.
The other lots are roughly the same.
Yeah.
That overlay was helpful, because I could see that the houses were a lot more substantial than you would think. If you're taking an existing house and a cottage, these maybe were built in nineteen fifty, but they're, they're substantial buildings now, you see?
Yeah.
And so are the others. If this woman has a five bedroom house, that's a substantial structure. Her claim wasn't based on any of the criteria. She's mainly concerned that, that the boundary line is going to be respected, because she had a bad experience with it. You see what I mean? So, having said all of that, the, it, it, once you are able to determine those criterion of substant, are substantiated by the evidence, then the findings of fact are good. You know, they're not arbitrary. And then it would be, there are titles to it. But not until they come in and show us that, you see?
Okay.
Do you follow how that works?
Well, I just, I'd rather not allow people to keep doing non-conforming stuff, if there's another alternative, which obviously there was in this case.
There was, sure there was.
Probably always can be, you know, but I go along, you know, with your, your thoughts on that, because I weigh heavily in terms of abutter objections.
Yeah.
You know, and, and that, you know, if there's quite a bit of abutter objections, I, I'd probably vote no, you know, on the, you know, on the application. But we don't see, you know, I don't know whether your butters don't give a damn, or it's not, I think it's not important to, you know...
I don't think they realize the impact them coming in and speaking would have.
That may be so, that may be so, but they have a right to do it.
Yeah, it could be, it could be some of that.
Yeah, because they're really giving evidence here, but...
Yeah.
Now, you didn't ask anybody to identify themselves when they spoke to you.
No, I did, I did a bad, I did a bad job, didn't I?
Well, that was Chris Donner, if he needed for the records.
It doesn't go in, just numbers go in.
Okay.
Usually I do.
Yeah, I know, and I was like, well, I know one, but I didn't know if anybody else.
Back to the document before us, I thi, I think it's a, a great document, and again, I think, again, my concern can be, you know, I can kind of get over it if, if, if the enforcement is scalable. You know, I don't, I don't know that we can, we can identify a five item or less checkout lane within the document, but again, I think if, if the board is reasonable in, in its enforcement of these requirements, that as long as we get clear and, and professional documentation, that again, is commensurate with the project involved, you know, I think it's a great guy.
Well, right, right now, right, right now, we have on, on, these, these pages unfortunately aren't numbered, but on the second page of the application, item C, it says, plot plan and building plans, in bold. And then it goes on to so, say, showing dimensions of proposed construction or existing buildings indicating pertinent distance from front, rear, and sidelines of property in public or private ways. We don't consistently get that, and we could just back up and add to that, that section, just so we can get dimensioned drawings.
Let me, let me try to incorporate these together, and get it emailed to everybody. This is, this is what everybody gets, the, this is what each applicant gets now, what they're told to bring in with them, and this is what we're proposing to kind of meld in here. So, let me try and put these two together and route it to everybody before the next meeting.
That's fine.
September fifth.
Good.
That's, that's great.
You got a month to do it.
That's, that's good.
Is that okay?
That's great.
Yeah, great.
That's right. A couple, a month or two is fine. Good, good. Sooner or later, probably sooner, we should be talking a, about elections. There's no reason for us to have a nominating subcommittee. And I don't know exactly how to conduct elections. Can we wait till September?
No, I want to get paid.
I'm not gonna be here on September, the first, the first meeting.
All right. Then we need to nominate and elect a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary.
A clerk.
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 Yeah, so far it just means, I mean, I have to sign something, I can handle that.
I nominate...
I just don't want to be, I just don't want to be...
I nominate Beth McCarty as clerk of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Any other votes?
Then all those in favor?
I...
Thanks, Matt.
I voted for you.
Okay, I'll vote for you.
The, Beth McCarty is unanimously elected as clerk of the zoning board.
I nominate, I nominate Michael Marnik as chairman of the zoning Board of Appeals.
I hear a second. Any discussion?
All those in favor? Aye. Michael P. Marnik is unanimously elected as chairman. We need a vice chairman.
I nominate Matthew Cole.
I second that.
Are there any other nominations? Would you accept a, an election?
Sure.
Very well.
I'm gonna vote. Come on, let's vote.
Matthew Cole is unanimously elected as vice chairman of Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there any further business to come before the meeting?
No, sir.
And one minor thing, if the board could just indulge. In, in reading through some of the documents from the last meeting, of which I missed the latter, two thirds of it, again, we had some unique circumstances that we haven't seen in a while. So, in the one case that I participated in, we had a, a dissenting vote. So, again, I know it's been a long time since that's happened, and one good practice that isn't an absolute requirement, but again, a good practice is to articulate within the decision some basis for the dissension. So, something that we want to think about going forward. But again, it led me to think further about the, the later two cases that I wasn't a part of, and that it really leaves the applicant in a vulnerable position, having just four members. So, I'm encouraged by the fact that we have another member coming on board, but again, we all have personal and professional obligations that, that at times take us away from the meeting. So, one example would be, if one of those hearings got continued to another date in which one of the four of us then couldn't make that hearing, boy, it really puts that person in a jam. So, there, there's a, there's a provision in, in mass state law that if the municipality adopts it, and, and I would be surprised if Orleans hasn't adopted this, but then again, the board itself needs to adopt it, that allows for a member to vote on a case, even if they weren't present at the initial presentation of the hearing, provided that they review all the documentation and file the recordings and so forth. So, again, I think whereas we're headed into a period of time where the board attendance may be scant at times, I think considering adopting this would be an, an, an important service to the applicant. So, if perhaps we want to consider it during the recess, and Sandy, if you can, or maybe Michael can be the interface to, whether it's town council or whomever, to just find out about any, anything procedurally we need to do, to be able to vote on it on the next, at the next hearing, to accept it. I think it's a reasonable...
Right.
I'll just put it on the agenda as an agenda item, and, and I know that the town accepted it, because when it first came out, we heard all about it, from Michael Ford, but he never told us that the board had to vote, too.
Would this be a requirement for somebody that wasn't able to attend the hearing to, to cast a vote?
Yes, you would, you would read the record.
So, I, I don't think you have to. I think it, it, it gives the applicant an opportunity to entertain a greater number of board members, if again, that preparation has, has been done, so, again, if...
But if you haven't done the preparation, you can't vote.
Right.
Now, this, there was, there was a colloquial name for this section twenty... Because counsel for one of the applicants mentioned it to us. Yeah, he did. Okay, we'll make sure.
Yeah, I mean, I would think, maybe it's not a requirement, but I think if you've missed a meeting, you can come in and listen to the recording.
It's, it's on, they recorded for TV.
Okay, you can watch it on TV.
When we recorded tonight, and somebody said that the little light had to be on, I didn't see it.
Yeah, I didn't see the light.
No, I checked in with him before we started.
And when do they stop recording?
She'll edit it out after we adjourn.
Okay.
Okay.
Edit what out?
Anything, anything after that, anything after we adjourn.
After the meeting's closed.
Have we adjourned?
So, again, if we're a panel of four, and, and the board, say, gets polled, and there's one of the four that potentially, you know, isn't clearly, you know, gives that applicant an opportunity to, you know, deliberate further and have, have a meaningful continuance.
Well, also, is there any feed forward? I think, you know, we tend to make sure, let Sandy know whether we can, if we cannot make it, you know, and if she goes through the count, you know, we've got three or four cases, should we have any way of feeding forward, you know, to, you know, to the people that, hey, we're gonna have to go by the four, you know, the four vote rule, and...
But it, it doesn't compel a board member to cast an absentee vote. It just, if, if they can have an opportunity to review and think they can make a decision.
No, if it's been approved after the fact, you don't have to go back and do it. But if something is continued, and you want to vote on it at the second meeting, whether it's been continued, if you want it to be active, then you have to go back.
But it doesn't compel you to, so that if you're at... So, if you're at the sec, if you're at the later hearing and you weren't at the first and you don't want to vote, it doesn't say that you have to vote.
No, no. But if you do, to qualify yourself, you need to review the record, including the transcript or a video recording of the session. That removes the disqualification. Okay, so the question is whether the town accepted this.
So, this doesn't mean if, if you're not, if you know in advance, you're not going to be at a hearing, be able to vote at a hearing. And you can review all the documents that have been submitted for a case. Can you then vote on that?
Can't vote in advance of the hearing.
You can't vote in advance, no.
Let's say like last week, one of those cases got continued. It's hard to make the example, but there were only four of you hearing it. And let's say on the continued date, you knew you weren't going to be here in advance, but Bill, who's not here yet, was going to be. He could watch the tapes before and then they'd still have four members and be able to have a vote.
But otherwise, if we had a quorum, then, and we voted, that's the end of the conversation. You can't...
It's the ideal situation.
You can't vacate the vote by reviewing the record and then becoming qualified.
Do I need to sign?
You start and it continues.
Do I need to sign?
There may be occasions where you would take several hearings. Take several days if you...
But it would only kick in if you... More than the second time.
You could use it to have a fifth member.
Yeah.
The second time.
Yeah.
Which, again, is just a better, a better vote.
Below the line.
You can still have a dissenting opinion and...
Why don't I get a line to sign?
If there's no further business to come before the meeting, then in that case, we'll detain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?